So here we are, uh, playing some cash. Um, I think it's too weak, we fold in the low jack. We open ace queen. And of course, we have some tough, uh, decisions to make here, especially post-flop, since I hardly studied post-flop cash games. Luckily, lots of concepts you learn in MTT poker also apply in cash games. Um, I think we mostly call here. We're gonna be thinking about our four betting range against the button. It will be a quite wide range, because the button is incentivized to three-bet quite wide in this spot, right? But there will be some four betting here with some ace-five suited, maybe some ace-ten offsuit, ace-jack offsuit, I think. Uh, maybe jacks plus. I think this hand prefers to call. That's wrong. It prefers to four-bet. I should have waited a second longer there, chat. Well, look at what, uh, 20% called there, so never call is a little bit, uh, too strict, but... Uh, so we did call the three-bet, um, I think we check call this board against a small bet. Well, we check raise, well, we cannot fold, so it's check raise. As played, I think we fold the turn. Only 56%, well, we were basically wrong on every spot here. But that means we can learn. Um... Kind of like the fact that we can click here and see the ranges here. Uh... Let's go back to where we are. This is cut-off versus button. Yeah, we never call offsuit hands, basically. That's a good, that's a good heuristic to remember. We never call offsuit hands, basically. We start three-betting, uh, tens. Uh, four-betting, sorry, we start four-betting the tens, uh, suited tens like to four-bet, because it's the bottom of our range. The ace-five is always in there. We do call lots of pocket pairs. We kind of betted that a little bit with, uh, the, the broadways. But ace queen, it calls a little bit, 20%. Hey Moose, uh, it's not, it's not a bad instinct, it's not a bad instinct to be aggressive here, right? It's not a bad instinct, because the button is incentivized to three-bet is wide, because it's all, you know, late positions versus each other. Nothing wrong with that in general. Note the suited connector calls. Yeah. If you have them, you should call with them, and we see this pattern a lot. Um... If, if you open the low pocket pairs or the suited connectors, you almost always continue with them if the, if the, if the rerace is not that big. You prefer to follow the offsuit crap, and the weakest offsuit, uh, suited stuff, but then the suited connectors often stay around, yeah? But that's a pattern we see a lot. Might be a little counterintuitive, because you, uh, you're less often dominated, right? You're less often completely dominated. And we're deep stacked here. Also, a thing that's, uh, very different to MTTs. In MTTs, you would prefer to have the high cards, because you want to make a pair and get it in on the flop, right? Hands like king-jack will be way better in, in 30 blind poker than in 100 blind poker. Yeah, yeah. That, that's basically the reverse of what I'm saying, yeah. All, all the, all the offsuit high cards, you know, they're just perform really bad deep stacked. Because, uh, reverse implied odds for those hands, because you always dominate it. Uh, and for the suited connectors, uh, we have implied odds. Not that, we're not that often that dominated, so we can make strong hands. Flushes and straights, two pairs. And of course, the same goes for pocket pairs. We do mix in some folding though with sevens, sixes, fives. But luckily, we can always exploit and change, right, based on what our opponents are doing? We think they're idiots, we can call wider. We think they're nits, we call tighter. You know, always need to exploit, but... If you know how to, if you have some reads or stats on them. There was only one hand yet, let's call, let's continue. Gotta, uh, remove that sidebar. Easy fold. If, if I think it's an easy decision, I won't, uh, stay too long. Uh, yeah, this is, uh, probably just an open. Not a clear open, though. My MTT brain goes, uh, fight me, fight with me again. I think it's not even that clear, but I think it's just an open. Yeah, 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 that's why eight-nine suited is super good, right? Or five-six suited, or any low-suited connector, but... Eight-seven and seven-eight are less often dominated, yeah, in that spot. That's true. I think we opened the jack-ten. Yep. We are playing, uh, against the big blinds. On a, uh, board that is very good for us. Um, I would think there might be some large betting here, to be fair. Uh, but we certainly see bet this hand. Like, we, we can bet, uh, a lot of our range here. I would also bet all our broadways, uh, good shots, I mean. We bet, right? 82%. And the nines fold, which is of course, a great result for us, because these hands are flipping against each other on this board. But we get all the chips. Our equity realization is 100%. Alright, well played, chat. We opened the hand, we see bet, we win. Hey. Bread and butter of poker, right? See bet, win. Low jack, we fold to jack-seven, um... So what is, what is our opening range here? Uh, on the offsuit side, it's like ace-ten offsuit, king-jack offsuit. On the suited side, it's like offsuit, suited nines, right? Uh, and king-eight suited, king-seven suited. So, uh, certainly a fold. Two of the nines is the bottom, uh, line. Oh, that's a good point. I mean, this was still a fine see-bet, according to GTO, but, uh... That's a good thing to keep in mind. Hey, good, uh, good evening, brothers. Hey, you got your new logo, of course. The welcome bot says, uh, hi and shows you the brothers' BR logo as you started streaming. That means we can give you a shout-out as well. I enjoyed your stream, uh, one of them at least, I missed, uh, I missed the other one, I guess. We're doing some, uh, GTO wizard studying here. Hope the stream will survive, I already had to restart sadly 30 minutes ago. Everybody else chatting then, is not here anymore. At some point, they'll realize I'm here, I hope. Uh, ace-four offsuit under the gun, easy fold. It could make this easier, but tougher for us, like, to remove all these easy decisions, but... I don't mind it for now. Oh, we, oh, we mix open, queen-jack off. Low jack. We mix open. It's not a bad idea to fold, but, uh, it's bottom. Queen-jack. But my mind went, I remember ace-ten, king-jack. And I, I thought queen-jack was a fold, but it's mixed. Not too bad, right? Close. You got better internet coming, awesome brothers. We can have the music back, right? And all our awesome effects. Yeah, I think I'll be fine, Yukora. We haven't, we, we, I did a 24-hour stream without, uh, any crush. And then a week later, I go live and it crashes after 20 minutes. It was quite random. Let's just assume it won't happen again. Oh yeah, so let's not cheat, let's just, don't watch it at. Um... So we opened quite wide with the suited kings. Is it already an open? Cut-off is like suited king-duce. Yeah, I think it's an open. Can ask chat for a second. Yo Anaconda, welcome to the stream. Your laptop is dead as well? Can't boot it. Oh, that sucks. Yeah, I haven't had any updates. Uh... I didn't do any updates. Hopefully, I don't have to. Luckily, everything seems fine now. So I don't know what happened. Quite random. Yeah, the suited kings are a wild one. Because we keep reminding ourselves how tight we have to be in cash games compared to tournaments. Looks very, looks very weird to open this. Um, but it is an open. I think two. Yep. And then, uh, because it's bottom of our range, uh, it should be an easy fold against the three-bet. 1.5% we call. No, we don't? It showed 98%, but I don't know why. It's not, it's not important. I thought it showed 98%, right? Folded? But here, here we find that. Here you go. We should, uh, we should four-bet bluff with it 1.5% half the time. Okay, okay. Yes, sir, if you say so. If you say so, sir. Here, there's that smithering of, uh, red here. And the king says, king-six. We don't have to remember this, it's not important. Interesting to see, right? But, um... If you go back to the opening range in the high jack, it looks like this. And it's not even close. Not even that close. We start opening king-five fully. And I didn't remember the suited nines correctly, but on the king side, super wide. You ran save mode three times. Oh wow, that's not bad, that's not good news, huh? What, what kind of updates? Is this Windows updates? Is this regular Windows updates? I'm scared now. I'm scared now for the Windows updates. Uh, easy fold with ace-three. A blind versus blind, there is no limping in in cash games. For the same reasons we mentioned before, there's no limping in, it's just raise or fold. A little bit easier to, uh, to play as well, to be fair. And all the mixing we have in, in tournaments with limping and, you know, the limp trap, the limp fold, the limp call, you know, it's, it's a whole different, uh, whole different story. Just kind of raise the ace. We don't. Oh yeah. Um, it's probably ace-three plus, by the way. It's not that big of a mistake as it seems. We'll look at it. Button is ace-three offsuit plus. And the, and the, the open ranges are super similar, button and small blind. Uh, so I did open. Now the question is, chat, uh, do we see bet this out of position? On this, uh, middling board? And high board? I don't think I will. Do you guys have an opinion about see-betting here? We had it before, but not this harsh. Okay, okay. Hope it all gets resolved. Yeah, I only have the laptop, I don't have any backup computers or anything. But so far, so good. At least I'm happy, I, my fan hasn't, hasn't brought me any issues lately. The, the, the CPU, uh, the GPU fan, uh, was making some noise and stuff. But that's been, uh, quite, quite calm on that front lately. Yeah, I, I have to admit, I struggle with these, uh, pots in the small blind, even in tournaments, so... And that, and that I've studied more than this, so, this is... It's kind of tough, because we're out of positions, we don't want to overly do it with see-betting. Uh, so they can have a hand like this, where we have no run or draw. Um... Oh yeah, yeah, it's not in our range, that's correct. But I just played a hand out, maybe I should not. But the ace-five offsuit would be, would be in our range, right, so we can, we can discuss a similar spot like this. We can just, uh, check fold then? Uh, we can't, we can't get correction from my GTO. Because it's not in our range, indeed, Hox Boss. Let's look at the range that we have pre-flop here. Okay, so it's ace-four plus. Raise first in, in the small blind. And we'd rather open ace-five suited than ace-three offsuit. And we open all the suited sixes, offsuit nines. I did remember that from the button. The button adds ace-three offsuit, so there's a, there's a bit of small differences there. But not huge. It would be completely fine, right, to open every ace, uh, in your, in your low-stakes cash games, like... Are they gonna attack you to wide? Are they gonna three-bet you, uh, relentlessly? Probably not, right? If you go, like, wider, or I, if I have to choose go wider or tighter, I think, I think probably wider is, is okay. Not, not overdo it, of course. Yeah, we want to, we want to see bet some ace-high, but usually when we have to run a flush draw, or maybe run a straight draw, or maybe on a more dry board, I mean, there's lots of other reasons, situations, you know? Pocket trees in the high jack. I think we have to let it go, even though it looks so cool. Hey, we, we have a pair, we can make straights and sets and whatever. Not many, not many straights. Have to just fold it. 82%, okay, yeah. You see that often, that it mixes a bit of the low pairs in every spot, to make sure we have some. But if you, if you randomize your play, then, you know, you can mix it in. But it's usually a fold, 82%. Uh, king-ten offsuit. Um... So it's a fold under the gun, a fold in the low jack. Now the question is, does king-ten get added in the high jack already? Or is it cut-off? This is off by one, or not? Who knows, chat? Do we open king-ten in the high jack? Or is it too weak? Undergun doesn't open it, it's king-jack plus. So, it's either the first open, or we have to wait until it cut-off. Either way, won't be a big mistake. Open, open, raise, and fold. Yeah, I think most people say raise. 81%. Hey, that's, that's basically the, the ratio of votes as well. Sorry, but you're that 20% of folds that we needed in that, uh, in that pool. Uh, okay, so we get called by the big blind. Uh, yeah, I think most of these boards where we have, uh, pretty big range advantage, and we have a good shot, that's, that's plenty enough to see bet. I would always see bet this. Uh, but Craig just told us, you have to be careful not to overly do it, because the big blind has relatively more, uh, aces in their range than, compared to MTTs. Yeah, I think, uh, overbet is, uh, makes sense, but I don't have that option here. Um... And I don't know if that's because of the settings in the trainer for this, or if it's the settings in, uh, the solution browser. You can do, uh, simplify it in general, and a couple other custom options. Um... Because it's quite funny, because I, uh, I did study some, uh, some bit of see-betting stuff with Juntal Little. And I did remember, uh, lots of these, uh, boards, especially when there's two straight draws possible, right? The straight draws around ace-jack, good shot, it's also a good shot on the low end, there's a flush draw. But that also means, that, that's all reasons to bet big, because it's a dynamic board. We could, we have a range advantage, and we have a nut advantage, because we have all the sets, uh, and, and, and two pairs, and ace-king and ace-queen. But we have range and nut advantage. It's a dynamic board. Uh... And it connects, it connects decently well with the big blind draws, I guess. But I think that all leads to big bets. Uh... So I, I agree with Craig, but I can't choose it here. I'm not completely sure why. Um... Not because of difficulty settings, I think. I think it has only to do with the simplified I've chosen here. Maybe I should go to, uh, gen, maybe I should make it general. Um... Because we are good enough for that. Right? But then we have to restart the training then. But I want to see how this hand ends. That's first play this hand. Yeah, I can, I can make reports. I got full access to everything in GTO Wizard. But wasn't really my plan for tonight, but... You could, uh, you could check there, uh, indeed, what bet sizes are used, uh... I had history once, that as much, because what we're trading here, that's what's being used, you know, and we have to change the, the whole settings of the thing and then play again. Uh, do we value bet the king here? A little thin, huh? Second pair. Hard to get called by a jack. Yeah, not too afraid of a five, he could have some five, actually. Probably supposed to bet that on the turn of the river. I feel like it's a little too thin. Okay, good check back. He has that, that specific hand that might call us. But, but it's the only hand he can have that might call us here if he bet with. Yeah, this will just repeat, uh, what we know. It's only small betting in this, uh, in this setting. Um... Yeah, we don't have to go to study either, it's not, that, that, that won't learn us anything. I think it's about, uh, general versus simple, or simple. And I think I'm gonna change it and see what that does for us, chat. Make it general. That's a lot, that's a lot to read. Um, but the, the summary of all this is that, uh, simplify it and simple, simplify the options. Um... Yeah. Let's try, uh, let's try general, chat. Let's try general. Let's pump up, uh, the difficulty. Yeah, we can look at reports, um... But let's do that some other day, maybe, uh... Or later, if we get bored with this. I hope so for you too, Anaconda. Will you, will you join me on, uh, on iPoker for some cash games later? I plan to play some 4NL. Um, with PokerTracker, I can show you my results as well, live. Okay, um, the button three-bets us. Um, you would be surprised, Anaconda, there is some jamming here. Uh, I don't recommend it, and it's also, it's only a, a small percentage of the, of the, of the play, I think, here. Uh, I think the, the play is just raised 22. Um, if we can actually jam a hand like ace-king here, um, because I've studied this, it's often kings and ace-king that do that. Um, apparently. But I don't think we need to do it. Good evening, honey. Welcome to the stream. 100%, in this case, we never jam it, so never mind. I lied. There are some spots where it is the case, huh? Um, so we did four-bet to 22 blinds, the button calls, uh, it's a pretty good flop. I'd prefer to have the ace of spades, of course. But it's still pretty good. Uh, monotone boards, we want to bet small in general. But I think we want to bet, right? Um, we still have jacks, queens, kings, and aces. Tens, we might never three-bet tens, by the way. The button might have a small nut advantage here, right? I would go small here as well, but I think the, the button has a bit of a nut advantage here. Because they would call with tens and sixes all the time against our four-bet. No, sixes might, might be too wide to call against the four-bet, though. We would never three-bet those, uh, four-bet those. But this board is not that great for us, but we have the king of spades in this case, so I would certainly bet, but... Yeah, yeah, you might be right, Craig, yeah. Of course, I remembered some of these charts, but always a little bit different, you know? We are playing cut-off button here, by the way, honey. Um... There's no small blind. I'm, I'm very sorry. Um... Who has more suited combos? Yeah, the button has more suited combos, right? Um... Would they suppose to call with a lot of like seven-eight suited and stuff, and eight-nine suited and stuff? Yeah, I'm betting 25, but I'm just, uh, thinking about our range advantage here, because that's, that's how we get better at poker, like... We, we don't have to just guess the sizing, we have to have a reason for the sizing, right? Um... But I like small betting. We, I couldn't even see some 10% betting here. Our SPR is lower than two. Um, maybe some 10% betting here, if that happens. But let's go 25. Oh, Craig said that. I literally didn't see that, Craig. You said 10%. Uh, we went for 25%. And we turned the king-high flush. Yeah, never betting, uh, never jamming here, that's like killing our equity. We just go small, the smallest bets possible, I guess, again. With 22 blinds here, 22%. Nah, it, it depends on what you mean, potential possum. Like, if you're a professional cash game player, you will know their pre-flop ranges pretty well. Um, I'd say, because I studied this for three, four hours, and I could tell you, I could tell you pretty well already. The raise first and raises. And then three-betting gets a little bit more tough, but... But this is post-flop, so this is, you know, you can't, you can't be perfect, uh, potential possum. You can't, you can't, you can't know everything, every spot. There's too many variables. That's why poker is so fun, right? But what, what all the pros know is how to think about these spots in a quick manner, right? Why do we bet small? Why do we bet big? Why do we check? Why do we do this and this and... That's how you become better at the game. Non-spades fold to smallest size, and we don't want to put too much in versus flushes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Maybe some checks too. Yeah. Because there's still one SPR on the river, we could get it in. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm gonna go 33. 80% of the time. Good study. Alright, what, what do we need to learn here? What street was weird? By a flop, we're supposed to, uh, check or bet small, mostly. And we knew, we know the reasons for betting small. But, uh, to differ between 10 and 25%, that's like a whole different level, you know? Decide the difference between those two. But that's okay. Yeah, if you always do it on feeling, uh, at some point, you'll, uh, you'll lose. You, you need some, uh, rational thinking in poker sadly, to get better, you know, to get better and, and, and go to higher stakes. I shouldn't take you too seriously, though, potential possum, I realize. At least I could take you seriously more often, but... Um, didn't we just look at the, look at this? No, this is a fold in the low jack. This is king-jack plus, okay, it mixes. Still mixes. That's okay. If you know, if you know the threshold hands in every spot, you're doing, you're doing quite well, you know? High jack, we're gonna open this. Song requests are available, by the way. Astermas Mark SR for the subs to put a song in the queue. Well, in cash games, you have to be much tighter, brothers. You, you, it almost sounds like you do it reversed. In MTTs, we have to be much looser than in cash games. Pre-flop. Yeah, cash games, we're supposed to play super tight compared to MTTs. Because there's no enties to be won, so the pot is smaller to begin with. And because of the rake, you want to induce, uh, try to win the pot pre-flop with three-bets, not call as much as we do in entities. Um, but there's two big reasons why, uh, usually cash game ranges are tighter. Lots of people don't do this well. So you can learn from this and, and implement it in your game, and, and print EV against all your lose opponents. Yeah, at the, the start of the stream, we looked at some ranges. Um, now we're just, uh, using your trainer to, uh, play uh, against our GTO opponents, um... We opened the high jack, the big blind defense. Not a great flop for us to, uh, go, uh, range betting. I think, because the, the big blind has some, uh, well, lots of draws, not necessarily much nuts, but... There's no straights yet. Um, so if we bet, we bet bigger here, I think. I think if we bet, we bet on the bigger side, because it's dynamic. The big blind can have lots of draws. We still have our range advantage. We have jacks and eights and fives. Um, and there's not, not that many two pairs either for them, right? The jack, uh, jack-eight suited, jack-five suited. Um, this is not even too bad for us. You might be able to bet often here, what do we think, chat? It looks like a bad board for us, because it's so connected and in the middle, and that, that, that favors the big blind a bit in general. But in terms of nuts, in terms of nut advantage, um, we have jacks and eights, um... overpairs. So I think if we bet, we bet large, that's already decided. But do we bet this hand? I don't think this hand likes to bet here. Um... Yeah, polarized see-bet range, yeah. And we can, we might even go like fold or something. Uh, we usually go bigger when the, the high card is a little lower. I guess the high card is a seven or eight. Our overpairs need more protection, so we go a little bigger. So on an eight-high board, we might go over-betting here, but... This is six-handed, yes, but it wouldn't... This is six handed yes, but it wouldn't really matter. Because we only look at the specific spot hijack button here. Uh, you can see, right, this is six handed, it's a little dark, but you can see it's six handed table. Yeah, I think we check, but it could be a mixed strategy. It is mixed. Yeah, and I really struggle with. Um, getting aggressive if you don't bet the flop, know what I mean? And this is, this might be a GTO thing, might be an exploitative thing. Because against your regular opponents. Um, your usual opponents at low stakes don't protect their checking range well, that means we can attack it wider than GTO would. But we should have some attacks on this turn, right, because our opponent. Uh. But didn't dog the turn, I guess, yeah. Hope you might never do that anyway, so it doesn't say too much. I, I'm gonna check again, gonna check again. This is a more clear check, alright. Is high just a bad hand to the bluffing grid, right? Because we might already be winning on high card. Uh, we booked some straights, I guess. Um. Yeah, also the four doesn't really help, yeah, it helps the big blind more than it helps us. Because he has, he still has some six, seven in his range, for example, more than we have six, seven in our range. But yeah, on a, on a low card like that, probably not a good idea to uh, to start betting suddenly. Um. Now, you gotta think about other hands that, that wanna check, right? Except ace high, it's also like a middle link pair, like sixes might wanna bet, uh, check back, I mean. Maybe something like ace five suited wants to bet check, so we gotta think about what kind of turns helps those hands. But uh, yeah, it's tough, man, I've never studied the cash games, uh, and, uh, especially not on stream, so this is also a little bit uh. Going into the dark a little bit here. Yo, Mr. Carbs. Thanks for the 39 months, my friend. Buonasnoti's Cash Learners, indeed. We will, we will play some poker later too, Solo. We will play some poker later too, but uh, we're starting with some studying. The key with this hand is what's bottom of range? Yeah, if he got polarized, then the bottom of our range needs to bet at some point. Are you talking the flop or are you talking uh other streets, Craig? Because, you know, that might intertwine a little bit here. Yeah, we don't have that many weaker hands in the hijack. Um. And we do have some suited kings, but some of them already pair. The sixes is straight too, so king nine, king ten are like bottom range here. That's about, that's about it, because nine, 10 is straight, six, seven is a straight. We have some king queen, we have some king nine, king 10, those are the only weaker hands. Um. Yo, thanks uh Carbs for the seven months. That's already, uh, that's already five subs this year. Happy to be back streaming today. Thanks for the subs, uh, Carbs and Potentius. You broke your fridge, how, how does one go about breaking your fr- breaking your fridge? How, how do you do that? Let me tell us what not to do, you know? Yeah, here's, here's about who has more six acts in their range, right, and nine, 10. Um, I would certainly c-bet nine, 10. And I think in general, the big blind has a bit more sixes, but it's not, not a huge difference, but yeah. Long story short, all these decisions were mixed, but all were on the right, on the right side of it. All were on the right side of it. I'm, I'm interested in the flop overall strategy, um. Yeah, we mostly check, but I'm, I'm also interested in uh. Our overall strategy. Can we find that this way? Nah, we have to go to reports for that. Okay, let's dive into that some other moment. What sizing on the river if we do bet? I can, I can show you that. Uh, so turn, um, if we bet, it's 75%. Four blinds into five and a half. And the river is the big blind checks to us, uh, we still mix, we mostly bet. 73%. And also, uh, yeah, the 6% of the range. Mostly tech and bets large. 73%. Have we got a hype train close again, chat? Been an hour since the last one? Yeah, it's been an hour since the last one. The puzzle number one, I wondered if I could turn it lower, so I tried and, and heard, and heard click, then I turned it off. Sounds like that's fixable, uh, if I'm completely honest. Sounds like you just turned it off and not broke it necessarily, uh, but yeah. Or if you broke it, it's only the. The, 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 the control thing unit, not the whole fridge. It does suck though, but this cold weather though. Just uh, you just put your cold, just put your cold food uh on the other side of the window and it'll freeze as well. Light still works, hey, that has power. That's also good to know, that it still has power. I think my, my fridge is all five or something. The number that you set, is anyone, it's like four or five, not one. Let's play a couple more hands chat, and then we'll do a quick break, I haven't, I haven't had a break yet. But I just uh, had to restart my computer, that was more work than uh, I hoped. But this is bottom of range chat, ace three offsuit. We do open it on the button, and we do fold to the small line when they three bet us. Played it well, chat. Alright, Mr. Carbs. Ice ripped, but was free? What, what does ice ripped mean? You are uh shocked by the prices? Alright, let's uh play a couple more spots, um. We certainly raise this. Eighty-six percent with eight, six, yeah, yeah. See what's happening here? The big blind calls. So of course we flop nice-ish, let's think about this spot again. These spots are wild and interesting, big blind calls wide, right? Blind versus blind is always tough. Um. Blind versus blind is always tough, like who has the range advantage here? Um. On an ace high board, we probably have a better situation, because the big blind would raise some ace x3. Uh, on a board like this. Um, he would also raise the pairs that set, to make a set here, right? The big blind raises most of these pairs, we're doing pretty well here in effort. But uh, yeah, of course we're gonna bet. But I'm trying to uh. Think out loud about the spot as a whole, right? That's what you gotta do, uh, when you get better at poker, you, you just need to see things in ranges and not just your hand. Like, oh, we have a good flop, so we said, we, we bet, like. Oh, everything works together, right? Everything works together, but, but what's the, what's the, what's, what do we do with our bad, bad hands as well? Um, an out of position here, we don't wanna overdo it, we do, yeah. We are the pre-flop raiser, we do have an overpair advantage for sure. But I don't know for sure how many uh middle pairs the big blind is supposed to raise in GTO land. That matters a lot for the nut advantage here, and it matters a lot in, in how, how big we wanna bet here. Well, I was gonna bet, uh, I was gonna bet anyway, Craig, the si- the sizing was my only discussion here. Um, I can see reasons for a big bet. I always bet big out of position. In general, that's a good idea. Um. But I'm not sure if this, if it's super relevant here. What, what drives bet size is, is position, but what drives bet size is also. Our connectivity with the board and range and nut advantage versus the other player. That's why I'm out loud asking ourselves and chat as well, figure this out together, who has the, the better nuts here? And does our hand need much protection? Because we need some protection here as well, even though we have two pair in this case, but what do we do with a single eight, right? If we have king eight, our hand is much more vulnerable, and that hand, that hand might, that hand might want to bet big, right? And then, you usually want to make it easy for yourself and have only one bet size with all your hands. Um, and then you also have usually one bet size on the turn and two bet sizes on the river. That's what, what's supposed to be. The way you learn to play poker at first, right? There's only one bet size here, so we have to find out what drives that bet size, which hands need the best protection? Do we, do we wanna go big that, because of that reason? Then also this hand like needs to go big. Otherwise, we're not balanced. But it's not the nuts. Um, there's some, uh, there's some straights here, five, nine, uh, nine, uh, nine, 10, there's better, there's better two pairs, eight, seven. Uh, there's sets, it's a good hand, but it's not a nut. Why, but why is that, Craig? I understand that, I understand that reasoning. But why does the big blind have more nut advantage here? Because we don't raise. Five, nine, but they, they don't call that either. Like, we have a similar range, right? Only her, only the big blind is capped. It's interesting, right? That's why I'm not instant clicking the solution, because it's good to talk about it. Check jam doesn't make any sense, Moose, we're too deep for that, mate. It, it's not, it's not tournament poker. If it, if, if we have 20 blinds here, then I, I get check jam, or even 30 blinds, I, I check jam, but, or bet call. But we have, we have 97 blinds behind, so we, we're not gonna check jam. We're gonna bet, I'm just gonna figure out what the sizing is. Some people say overbet, some people say small, and the commerce says 75%. So we're a little, we're a little unsure here as, as a, as a community, but we need to figure out what's the, what's the answer. Yeah, if, if the opponent has the nuts, right, we go small. Um, but if the, is that, is that, is that a problem if we also have the nuts? Like, we don't, they don't outnut us here, that's, I understand that they can, they can have the nuts. So that's a good reason to bet in small. And in general, we have the range advantage, so we bet often. So that leads to betting often for a small sizing. Um. I'm not sure that I have five, four offsuit though. Like, in a, in a, in cash games, you fold five for offsuit. You probably still, you are, you probably are still right, Craig, I'm just trying to give some counter opinions. Because I, I don't think the big blind is supposed to defend five for offsuit, maybe not even nine, four suited. Um, I think it's like suited three gappers, like five, eight suited might call, five, seven suited, something like that. Nine, four might be too wide in cash games. Um. That would be a good reason to go big, uh, Afro American. That, that is the, that is why sometimes different reasonings can go to different conclusions. Then it's to be, then we have to decide what's more important. The more kept a range is, the more we use a big bet. Um. That would lean towards big betting, because the big blind is capped, but maybe you mean it differently. That's, that's why I'm taking, yeah, that's why I'm taking, taking some time here, right, Afro American? I wanna give people some time to think about it, wanna give people some time to formulate their thoughts, because it's not as easy as it looks. That's why poker is so beautiful. You can just click buttons, you know? Yes, if I drink 10 beers and I play 2NL with chat now, I'm just clicking buttons. Poker can be fun in multiple ways, but now we're diving into this. We can't go back. Ah, that way, yeah, we can go small, because the big blind will give us enough action. So it's not a problem to not go big already. Is the queue empty again? What is, what is happening here, chat? Maybe I should have a playlist for uh streams like this. May- maybe sorry requests are better off later on in the stream, right? Um. Maybe, maybe for some, maybe a playlist is better, but to be fair. If uh, there's no sorry request, there is a, there's already music playing, so, there is a playlist basically already in play. Yo, Slavich, uh, nope, I'm not yet on, back on GT. I am not yet back on GT, so we have some different opinions here, uh, Craig likes small and I, and I, and I respect him. Uh, and I think he made lots of good points for a small bet. Um, I also understand the reasons for a bigger bet, that's what my first thought was, and a couple other people in chat say also big. Um, but the overall. Decision will be, I think I'm gonna click small, also because we wanna bet often here, because we have range advantage. We wanna bet small, because the big blind has the nuts. Uh, and it's not that dynamic of a board, right? It looks that way, but it's not that dynamic. Um, maybe if, if there was a flush draw, we might size up. Yeah, let's, let's just move on, let, let, let's just move on. Okay, it's not small, or not that sizing anyway. We'll see soon what it was. Now we still play on with the two pair. Um. It's probably strong enough to still bet the turn. Um. He'll have some two pairs now. That beat us. From jack six, jack seven, jack eight suited, that called a flop, right, and they don't raise it. Not a great hand, hard for us, that's about 50%. Then we get re-raised, I'm not in love with this, we can't fold just yet with two pair, I think. But our head is not that strong here. He could still have slow played nine, 10. Uh, he could have jack six, jack six, six, seven. Maybe some diamond draws to start bluffing. Ace, nine, a diamond or something, so he can't fold. We make a full house. So maybe checking here is a thing, because we can make sure that he goes barreling with his diamonds. Um. And if he has something like six, seven, he's betting anyway, so he can check raise. The thing is though, if he, if he has a, a single jack. Maybe jack nine calls flop and, and raises turn, or jack 10. I'm thinking a bit more exploitive here, like I don't want to check back a jack. And he can have quite some jack x, maybe that, that means we have to bet. And then they will still raise six, seven, and jack, and, and, and straights. Maybe I like a small bet here. Yeah, 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 his two pairs are uh fucked. Seven, eight is fucked, jack seven, jack eight. Do we have more six in our range? Do we bet the six on the flop? Maybe, probably. I think I wanna bet small here, and make, you can still call jams with this hand, right? We're gonna bet call here. Yeah, the sizing is wrong. Oh yeah, we have this, we have this discussion basically every time I host these kind of streams, Slavich. Uh, I can always have the same answer. Um, to get good at poker, you need both, you need fundamentals, and we can learn those by using GTO wizard. You should always exploit your opponent if you can. You should always exploit your opponent if you can. And, and fight adjustments, uh, in real, in real life. So yeah, it's always both. Um. But if, if you would just copy GTO at micros, you would still make money. But you can do better by exploiting your opponent. Um. Let's go back to the, the, the spot we thought about the longest is the flop decision, right? Um. Where we discussed the betting size on the flop. We're supposed to check ninety-three percent of the time. That surprises me. That surprises me. Um. Can we, can we find the answer to this problem by going into the ranges? Um. Can you see this, guys? Yeah, it's a little small, but. Um. The small blind has a bit of a range advantage here. That's what I mentioned. Where's our, where's our graph? Where's our range graph? Thought it would show the range graph. Is it only three flow? Oh here, equity tart, that's what I mean. Yeah, these run pretty close to each other. Um. But we can see the big blind has a little bit of a nut advantage. The green line is above the small blind. But overall, the small blind has a range advantage. So yeah, we have basically similar nuts. But even a bit more for the big blind. And overall, a slight advantage, but it's pretty close, right? So yeah, we can use equity buckets. We can also use this graph for the same information, basically. This is the same information, but then grouped in four buckets. Um, best hands. Big blind has a little bit more, like I said, but overall we have a little bit more. Um. So that would lead to small betting. But not as often as I thought. And that's basically the summary here. Yeah, you said check jam, right, Moose? That's, that's why you were wrong. We don't check jam. Um, but we can look up what happens if we check. Um. Because they probably check raise this hand. Maybe not even though, but we probably check raise it. Um. Where do I find this though? Play from here. Not sure how this works, uh, precisely. Well, I want to check now. Yes, there we go. And then the big man goes for a big bet. In position. Um, and now we have the equity graph here as well. So we are high up in our range. The, the yellow dot is where we are in our range. Um, but we are a little owned here by the big lines. We're a little owned here in terms of equity. So this probably drives us towards just tech calling here. Even though our hand is quite vulnerable. Interesting, interesting spot. Uh, Craig says something smart. When equities are close, as we saw in the graph, out of position is more checking, yeah? Because in position can realize equity better. But when equities are super close, in position just realizes more equity that way, so we can't attack that well. We need to be a bit more passive. Uh, yeah, Slavich, I think that makes a lot of sense. You could, you could learn perfect pre-flop ranges and go well. Especially just raise first in ranges. And big blind defense range like still you need adjustments here and there, but you, you could, you do, you'll, you'll do pretty well if you have solid ranges pre-flop. Lots of people don't have solid ranges. They play completely to lose with some hands, completely too tight with others. Then versus three bets though, it already gets a little bit dicey, right? Because people will not three bet enough, so you have to defend a little tighter as against three bets. You need less four bet bluffs against passive opponents. But you already start exploiting pre-flop against population. And post flop, like the further the hand develops, the more we should deviate from GTO in practice, I think as well. So I agree with you. I, I wasn't realizing we're gonna do this, uh, this only, this one hand twenty minutes at a time. But have we learned things, right? Hopefully. Um. My instinct is check raise here, Moose. But one, but now that I look at the equities and the charts, we're not, yeah, I mean, we're up and, we're high up in our range. So GT probably likes a raise. Um. Interesting. I'm not sure I want to play the whole hand again. Uh. I'm just gonna quickly, quickly click this through chat. Hey, same run out. Same run out, chat. I'm only worried about the, the flop decision for now. Uh, no, we should check all. We should check all. So this is all driven by the fact that we, uh, are out of position on a board where we don't have a big range advantage. Equities run pretty close. And that's why we should check a lot. And we can really build a big pot with lots of our hands. Of course, two pairs is quite good. But our strategy is, is driven by all these other hands we have. And we're in trouble here in general. That's the problem. Um. So yeah, against, uh, against the big bet, we just check all and go from there. Yeah, if we check raise, it gets the, we, we, we're making his range too strong, but, but allowed to continue. It's probably better to check raise. We have some stronger hands we can check raise, right? Nine, ten, sets. Maybe some draws, like maybe ace nine with one of these suits, one of the runner first rolls. Maybe the hands like that prefer to check raise. This hand is basically like a top pair hand, right? Not that strong. Like ace eight. Like if you look at the whole equity here, equity chart here. Um. Well, it's top pair and eight. We are a small blind, okay, yeah. So we are the, the bottom line here. All these hands have ninety-four percent equity or more. This is just top pair. This is just ten, nine. Oh, this, no, this is straight, sorry. This is straight. It's all the straights, all the stats. Uh. Two pairs, this is where eight six is. Eighty-four percent. But that's sixteen percent more, better hands and eighty-four percent more worse hands. That was my point? I had some point, but I forgot what the point was. Solfer loves slow playing when the two pairs are top and bottom cards. That's an interesting heuristic. I'm not sure if it's the right. I mean, I'm sure you're right. But I'm not sure what, what the right reasoning, the reasons, the reasons might be different in different spots. Like the problem here is we are out of position. That's why we play a little passively. Right? And because of in this spot, blind versus blind, the ranges are pretty close. Uh, equities are pretty close. It would be much different if we were, if we were cut off or hijack. But it would be a whole different hand. Yeah, 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 we're targeting eight x. Um. Or the, the rare seven, six, but you know, that's only a couple of combos. Um, yeah, we're targeting top pair, right? Yeah, maybe some seven x. If they, and if we check raise, we, they're not allowed to continue a lot, okay? We're gonna move on, chat. I think we, uh, discussed this hand enough. And I'm gonna take a quick break. Um. I'll be back in a, in a couple of minutes. Enjoy the, the tunes. Maybe some trivia. We'll play a couple more hands after the break. Alright, we're back, baby. Welcome back to the streamer buddy. Bit of GTO wizard studying tonight. I'm, I'm loving it. It's a little tough, but that's, that's good, right? You can never improve if you're not in tough spots all the time. Tough spots make you better in the end. So we're gonna do a bit more, maybe another thirty or forty-five minutes. We had a bit of a slow start because I had to restart the whole stream, so I think we're gonna do another forty-five minutes until like nine thirty-ish. And then, uh, then I'll, then I'll play some cash, maybe, uh, put some practice to, uh, put some theory to practice. Let's see if we can, uh, make some money at four and L. Um, I wanted to say something else about, uh, GTO at low stakes. Some people might be wondering, uh, or said something about that, that, uh, it's not useful to learn or anything. Um, it is useful. Keep in mind, you always can adjust, but if you don't know the baselines, don't know the fundamentals, what are you adjusting from? You don't know, right? But it's always useful. Then there's also a lead in detail wizard. You can actually, uh, with AI in the AI package, you can actually adjust ranges and exploit and see what the exploit looks like. Then it gets very interesting, right? But you can, you can study a specific spot and then change your opponent's actions the way you want them to be. Make it more passive, make it more loose, see what your adjustment is. Lots of the times, these adjustments can be quite, quite big. Um. I've written out some videos about it on the DTO Wizard blog, which is free. Check it out, DTO Wizard blog, lots of interesting articles about how to use the software. Also, if you don't have a subscription, you can watch these for free and, uh, learn something for free. But yeah, let's move on to the next hand. I'm a little bit done with the two pair hand. But thanks for all the feedback. How are we doing so far? Seventy-six percent. I'll take it. I only played six hands though. I only played six hands. Now we, we, we changed the, the dynamics, right? We changed the settings. We played twenty, we played twenty or thirty hands before too in other, uh, in other settings. Uh, easy fold. Easy open. Here we go again, chat. Here we go again. Um. Quick questions always first. Who has range advantage? Well, we, who has nut advantage? Uh, the big blind, um, has some suited queen seven, queen deuce. Uh, and some sevens and deuces. But it's not a big deal. It's not a huge deal for us. We still have queens, sevens, deuces, overpairs. We also, we also have queen seven suited. I think nut advantage here is not a big deal. Um. I think we're not, we're not in super big trouble here. Um, I kind of like the fact we have runner draws here. We have runner hearts, we have runner straight roll. So I think we go bet often, bet small here. That's my, that would be my intuition. NL four on Unibet is so easy. Oh, I can, I can totally understand. It's also pretty easy on iPoker. That's where I'm gonna play a bit later. Uh, I like how it looks much better. iPoker is, uh, much better to stream. You can use PokerTracker as well and track your results. Look at your own stats, which is a big plus for me. Because I'm basically learning to play cash games from scratch again. Which is kind of cool. Uh, then it's very important to look at your stats, like where's my three bets, my raise first ins? What's my EV? What's my BB per hundred? So I'm kind of happy that Holland Casino, uh, provides it, iPoker, so. That's why I'm gonna not play much Unibet, I think. Even though I would advise you because it's super soft, as you say, but. So yeah, I, I think bet small, bet often is, uh, the solution here. Um, and if not even often, this hand is a good candidate to bet. With the runner draws we have, we can wrap overcards if they keep falling. If a king or ace comes, we bet. If a heart comes, we bet the turn. Maybe a nine, so there's lots of continues that are good for us. I think. Um. Not that many check raises here from the big blind, I suppose. Because he doesn't have that many nutted hands. Except the queen seven and the sevens. So I think we can get away with betting often here. That's my idea. People just like to play the game, Slavich. People just like to play. People are gamblers. Like I don't, I don't know if you mean a full-time player because, you know, if they're not winning, they're probably not full-time, right? It's not that hard to keep losing at poker. It's not that hard to keep losing for years. I've, I've done it myself, so. You don't take it seriously, you will keep losing. But people are stubborn. People just play for fun. Never want to be pro or never want to put in the work. And I've been like that myself, so I know how it is. But I don't think I was that bad as the players as you talk about, but. As, at least I'm not that, that bad anymore, but. Anybody want to feedback on this, uh, this flop C-bet? I'm gonna, I'm gonna bet small here. I think you have a good interaction with the board that can give us lots of bets on the turn. There's not that many, uh, nutted hands. We could even go bigger. Um. Yeah, I like, I like small. Of course it's wrong. Let's see what the ranges were. Uh, I am just gonna check this, I think. Like I said, I think I continue on a, maybe an ace, a king, a heart. This blank, it doesn't seem like a great continued barrel. Uh, the big man can have queen four. Small reason to check, not a big reason. Check is, check is fine. We refer at ten. Uh, now we have the question, after C-bet, check, check, check. Do we in position bet for value here? Um. Similar spot earlier, this was too thin. Um. You can't really have a weaker ten, that's a problem. Like which, which ten x does he have? But that can really call us, so we have to get, get value from a seven. Or poker eights or something. And that's also likely to three bet, so I don't think we should bet. It's too thin. There's not enough value hands that can call us. Alright, that was correct as well, chat. I played the turn and the river, okay? But then the flop, my sizing and, and, and my idea was completely wrong. So we mix this. Checking and betting, uh, larger. Interesting. Yeah, some will be gamblers. Some might have tried to get better, but just never find the right way to study or, you know? Find their leaks or had no money or interest to buy PokerTracker or any other training program or software yet. Lots of people are like that. It's very understandable. To be fair. Yeah, yeah, yeah. On a non-spade you would have bet, okay? Yeah, on the river, right? Yeah, I'm surprised about the, this flop situation, so. Um, equity tart. We have a big range advantage, as I said. The, the red line is, is comfortably The, the red line is, is comfortably above the big blind, and also quite a big gap. Nuts. We have the same nuts apparently. At least at the complete top. Um... Even though for the big blind, the nuts is sevens. For us, for us it's queens, but that's such a small difference. Um... But here, we still have, uh, we still have nut advantage, basically. Because we're, we're still above here, all this, all this area. Um... What does that tell us? Bet often is not that bad of an idea, by the way. Like, the, the bot, the GTO bet 60% of the time here. Um... But, uh, apparently we go a bit more polarized here. We go a bit more polarized. We go a bit more checking, a bit more betting big. Um... It's down to our value region, yeah. That's, that's always, that's always interesting. Uh, but why? Um... I mean... Why, why do we, why do we need bigger bets specifically on this board to get stacks in? Like, if we have ace, queen, or kings, why do we specifically need bigger bets? I totally understand. The bluffing, uh, portion has to come, uh, you know? Has to follow, and has, has to use the same sizings. Yes, so you're saying in cash games, there's more big betting, right? That you said that earlier too. And in tournaments, there's more, there's more, uh, there's more range betting with small sizing in general? I'm not even sure if that's true. I, I mean, I, I believe you, but I have no, I have no proof seen, I've not seen any proof of this yet. So we lack medium strength hands, you say? Um... That want to go for tin value. Wouldn't that be the case on almost every board then? But it's hard to capture these things in a couple sentences or a couple, you know? It's hard to capture poker, you know, in, in, in only one spot we're looking at, but... It's, it's good to try to generalize things and find heuristics and see how we can apply them in different spots that are similar. We can't be robots for sure. We can try to become one. To be fair, like, again, if, if in-game you C-bet this for this sizing, it won't be a huge mistake. Because it's even in the options, right? Even the valid GTO move. Only 8% of the time, so we mix this. We could look at the whole strategy. Um, on this board. Versus the big blind. On the right is the cut-off strategy. Super mixed, right? Super mixed. But, uh, yeah, our queen x is our, is our value range. And our kings and aces, they, they wanna go big often, yeah. King x wants to go big. Ace wants to go big. Queen x wants to go big. Yeah, so the, the big blind has less complete utter trash. Um, which makes sense, yeah. But when you see this gap being even bigger than it is here, if you have, if you have, if you see the big blind, like, super low in equity here, that means he has super much trash, rack, queen high, and worse, and worse, then you can just bet small, because that's gonna fold anyway. You don't have to, like, put effort into get those hands to fold. And Crack is saying that in, in empty Ts, that's bigger, that's more often happening. These big, because they can call wider pre-flop. I'm trying to make it understandable for everybody, and I'm trying to understand it myself at the same time. And I've seen some graphs where this big, there's a much bigger gap here in range advantage at the low end. Um, which, uh, which could drive a, a play like that. Makes sense. Let's move on. Let's move on to the next hand. Uh, so this is a fold, cut-off, ace three offsuit. Um, I mean, it wouldn't, wouldn't be a great opening entities either, right? Um, would be close in entities, but certainly a fault in, in, in cash. This is something that might, beginners might do wrong a lot, right? On the cut-off here, they might think, oh, there's only three people behind me, I have an ace. I'm, I'm sure, well, I will open this, right? And that would fold king duce suited. Or jack eight suited, right? And those are clear opens here. That's, it's interesting to note that this ace three is a fold. Yeah, yeah, totally Crack. We, we often agree, but you, you are a little bit better at explaining the theory. Uh, also, you're, you're just a little bit better at studying it. But that's why I can learn from you. But sir, but luckily I understand most of what you're saying, so then I can translate it to hopefully other people that can, uh, can learn with me here, you know? I make, I, I try to make it sound more easier to understand. I'm not sure if I succeed, but I'm trying. So next hand? Um, we love suited kings. And I think this was an opening, the hijack? I think this mixes under the gun. Was it mixing? Yeah, I think king five is fully opening. And king four mixes. I think that's the case in the lowjack. And I hope some people, um, get something out of this. But that's the beauty about this, uh, at least I get something out of it already, so... That's good enough, right? Anybody wanna gamble on this open? Lowjack, six-handed. I think it mixes, so I think it's okay to open or fold. It could also be king five that's the border. Maybe, maybe we, we go safely fold. But if it mixes, we'll be correct as well. Okay. Okay, it's completely folding. Uh... Okay, it's king five. Close enough. King five goes, uh, open. King four never. Hey, but it, it's very close yet. Not like it's a huge mistake to open king four suited. It's only one hand, one hand, one pip, you know? That's why I wanted to pause for a second there. It's on the border. We're not cheating. We're minimizing this. I've not seen that. Uh, this is an open though. Uh, suited queen six on the cut-off is an open. We get three bets. We can get out of the way. Ooh, we have a street going on. First today. Uh, eight, seven off. This is even, uh, close on the button, I think. This is, might even have fold on the button, so never an open. Got a pocket fours on the button. Uh, yes please? Now we're playing a hand again. Interesting board. So my immediate thought on this board is, with three broad raises, we often bet small. I've watched a video about this today. Um, there's already straights possible. Which, uh, is a good reason for betting smaller. Not that many draws, even though it looks scary, but it's not, not that many draws. Um... Of course it's a good board for our range, right? Um... Of course we wanna bet. We wanna turn our fours into a bluff here, I think. Um... And I think it's small. I think it's a small bet. I think it would be a big bet on like ace jack five. Ace jack four. Like, two broadways and a small card is often a big bet. Three broadways is often a small bet, I think. Um... That makes a lot of sense. Crack says I'm only bluffing here with the spade. Maybe I'm, uh, maybe I'm overdoing it here. But I'm gonna go with my instinct, the C-bet. 11%. With this combo or with all the fours? I think just this combo. We'll look it up. Um, now that I did this, I'm not so happy with this three, but we still have a huge advantage, right? Can make him fold his jack and 10x that called a flop. But I should continue bluffing if I bet the flop. Uh, let's go 50 or 75, I think one of them. Did we go small? 50, small-ish. On the small side, let's 50. That's not correct. So we'll check, uh... Oh, we, oh, what? We check back 80% of the time here. Oh. Oh, with this hand, of course, yeah. Not with all our range. Sorry, I was confused. Always this hand, not the range. Uh, and if he bell the turn, oh, we suited, okay. We suited it all. I'm just too aggressive here with this hand. So let's check, uh, our strategy here. Um... This is our strategy. And we are indeed much more likely to bet with fours if we have a spade. You're right on, mister Crack. You're right on. Our combo is the worst of all. With the diamond and the club, is betting the least of all the combos here. Which is a lot of sense, right? It's a lot of sense. Uh, but yeah, uh, with the spade, we are allowed to C-bet quite often here. About 75% of the time. Okay, on the right track, on the right track. I overdid it a bit. Yeah, so again, it's good that we can repeat this stuff, right? So that we, that's actually how you learn easier. The same spots come over, come again, again. And it's easy to understand. Um... So again, if you look at the equity chart, uh, we have a big range advantage, but the amount of trash is not that big. Like, pretty, pretty quickly in the graph, even the big blind goes up. And along with us. Um, and as we assume, in, in empty Ts, this gap is bigger, and the big blind has way more, way more trash. And it's because they call wider pre-flop. It's good that we repeat that and go over it again. Cool. Uh, but my idea to bet here with the fours was a little bit too aggressive. But, uh, it's okay. It's, it's alright. Oh, we have kings. Is it the, is it the first premium hand we had today? RNG finally happy with us too? We get three bets. Um, should be a pretty easy, uh, a non-four bet all-in, like, not all-in, all-in four bet, right? Um... Lower the music a little bit? What's this music? Nice. In my playlist yet? My, my backup playlist, for if there's no stones in the queue. R2Oskan, Lovebug. I don't mind it. We were shoving here, Crack. We literally had a spot like that earlier, right? Where I thought it was some shoving with ace king, but it wasn't. Uh, but now you think it's here? It is shoving? If it is, it's a small portion of the, uh, the play anyway. And in-game I'd hate it, so we, let this raise 20. Okay, 100%. Here, which is purely four betting. I think you're on the right track, Crack, for sure, but it's probably like a couple positions, uh, earlier. Like, if it's lowjack versus hijack, then this might happen more. I think you said that earlier, right? Uh, then cut-off hijack, but close enough. We're supposed to just four bet call. Nice hand. We do lose against ace king. Sadly. Yo, Esclam. Good evening, how you doing today? Uh, ace three is folding on the cut-off. We had, we went over this before. Uh, queen ten, and the hijack will min raise. Will raise. Uh, even though I hate it, and it's on the bottom layer of the range, but it does open. Okay, 52% of the time. What I'm saying, right? And that means bottom of our range, offsuit hand, out of position, easy fold. Nice to know some things, you know? Uh, in a, in a, in a tournament, this is, uh, close slash opening, right? Not here. It's borderline in tournaments, in the cut-off decade. Nine seven, easy fold. Under the gun, nope. Uh, yep, a queen nine suited we play. We're playing against the big blind. Hey, the first paired board of the night, I think. Um... The big blind doesn't have too many, uh, three x though. Um... Ace three? Does he have king three offsuit? I think even king three offsuit folds. But on the offsuit side, he only has ace three. And then we have, you have some suited trees, but we have the same suited trees. So this paired board is not as scary as an eight six six board or eight seven seven board. Uh, but usually, uh, on a paired board, we're gonna bet small. As a general rule. Um... So I guess we also bet small here? Super dry board too. If you bet big, like, what's gonna call us, you know? Like, hard to get value from anything. So yeah, let's go small. Alright. Maybe our hand doesn't just wanna bluff? But we'll, we'll, we'll check it out. Uh, but now we're in this spot, we have to keep betting, I guess. We have, we turn a gutshot. It's an overcard that might scare him away if he has pocket deuces. Uh... Now flop bet was already iffy, but if we are getting to this spot this way, that's better to turn large? Hmm. Hey, I said the same, 75%. We get there. Thanks RNG. We got there. Um... We have a straight. Yes, uh, we go big-ish? What's gonna call it though, you know? So... Hey, we should go small probably. Like, it's so hard to get called here. If he bet big and eight's gonna fold, he doesn't have that many trees. Because he has, he doesn't have that many to begin with. And some of them raise the flop. So it's not that likely that he has a three in his run, in his hand, right? And then eight might fold to a big bet. But we might have to go small for value here, like, it's just too hard to get value. And he could have some runner two pairs. Ten jack of, ten jack of spades, right? Is he calling an eight if he bet big though? May, well, maybe he shoot in GTO land. Always that, 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 that... This is all, what we discussed earlier, right? The deeper you go into a hand, the more important it becomes how different your opponents are playing, you know? I think we're gonna chase away an eight if we bet big, but that might not be a huge deal, but that would be my, my reason for going small here. We're only targeting like yeah, the ace jack, jack ten of spades. Ten nine of spades. It's, there's not that many. Um... Hey Crack, if you win, you win. I'm gonna go small. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna be stubborn here. Oh, 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 oh. You're completely correct, of course. Why am I so stubborn? It bets, uh, it bets, uh, all-in. What the fuck? I'm even more surprised than I, than I, than I was... I'm, I'm even more surprised than I thought I would be. But I would not be surprised if you were correct and that betting big would be okay here. If we don't go big, we go ballistic. We go berserk. We go nuke. We bet four times pot. Yeah, in-game, against real people, a small bet makes sense. Because he might chase away those eight x. Yeah, but four times the pot all-in? Quite sick, man. Quite sick. Uh, this is why we have two sizes on the river, right? In, in, in most spots. But if we have something like ace jack or something, or maybe even ace ten of spades, like, for tin value, we can bet small. We're allowed to have two sizes here. Which is tough to bet. Which is tough to balance with your bluffs, but you know, even we, we, we should be okay. But I didn't think that, uh, our biggest size would be all-in here. How often do you guys bet four times the pot yet on the river? Maybe, we, we have lots of tournament players here, so I guess this never comes up, but... I certainly can tell you that I, uh, I don't go four times pot on the river too often. But that's what, uh... That's what's happening here. Three ninety-two percent. Okay. I like it, though, I like it. Um... It's, uh... It's suited, suited nines, yeah, suited nines. But we do open the ten-nine suited. Ooh. I'm, I'm, I barely passed there. The mix. It's a mixed pre-flop, we, the big blind calls again. Where have you seen this before? Um, he's supposed to call not here with jacks and eights. Though the big blind probably has the sets here as well. Because he's not gonna, uh, three-bet those against under the gun. Oh, he has the sets, he has the two pairs. He has a lot of draws. Uh, dynamic board, we have a bit of a range advantage, yeah, let's go big, yeah. This is probably the same spot earlier where we wanna go polarize. We wanna, we wanna polarize our strategy here and bet big or check. Um... Then I certainly wanna bet this one. Because you have some immediate folds from hands that are better than ours, like the king highs that miss completely, the king five suited. Maybe, uh, we can bellow him off some six x, some under pairs. So yeah, I think, yeah, I think I go big, I go big. We now have the option to go big as well. Uh, to, to go real big with the purple overbet. I changed my colors, uh, a while back. Overbets are now purple. Moose likes to check races, eh? You've, you've said a couple check races earlier. I'm not saying it's, it's, you know, a super bad idea, but um... We are in position, so we can really check race here, Moose. If we check back, then, uh, this is the turn, right? We're in position. So we certainly wanna bet here. Yeah, we lack eight x. I literally said it, right? Suited nines is opening here, pre. But we have a lot of nine x, but not that many eight x. Because we don't open the offsuit eights, we don't open the suited eights. So we only have eight, ace-eight suited. And maybe eight-nine suited. Maybe, right? So we don't have any, yeah, we lack eights completely. Um... So that doesn't drive our betting. That's, that's how, that's maybe smart. But the jack x drives our betting, and the overpairs and the stats drive our betting strategy here. They all wanna go big. And our bluffs wanna go big. And it's a dynamic board where the turn changes the winning hand a lot, so lots of reasons to go big. Lots of reasons to go big. Why is there more overbetting on rainbow flops? Because I know monotone boards, we wanna bet super small. Boards, whether it's already a flush possible or a straight possible, those boards, we wanna go small, super small sometimes. When there's big draws, when there's two flushes or two straights, like here, we wanna go bigger. But why on rainbow specifically, there's more overbetting? As always, I believe you, crack, but I'm trying to learn why. Just jam at any straight draw. Not yet, Slavich, maybe on, maybe on future streets if we miss. It seems a bit early to jam. I know you're kidding around. Yeah, I'm, I'm debating between these two. This is a little iffy, a little spicy, the, the overbet. I'm okay with seventy-five percent, but... On rainbow flops, our overpairs gets stacks in more easily on river, ah, yeah, 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 yeah. And the big blind calling raises less equity-driven. I, I, I understand the first part. Like, there's less often nasty runouts, so we have easier value for us, right? Easier. There's less scary runouts for us, so we can more often get value with our single pairs. What, what, what do you mean by the big blind's calling range is less equity-driven? They have, they have less draws. Right? Oh, yeah, yeah. They have less hands that can improve against us. Is that what you mean with that? Just this English language thing, not that poker thing, technical thing? Yeah, this is me learning English, not, not poker. Yeah, 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 I understand now, I think. A flush draw has more equity than top pairs, yeah, yeah. So and on, on rainbow boards, this is not so much of an issue. Might be counterintuitive for people, right? That's why I paused and, and asked you to explain. Because I think a lot of people might think, uh, on dry boards and also rainbow, we always bet small because we don't need protection, because there's no draws, right? That, a logic that has materialized in poker. And sometimes that is true. Uh, but for the reasons you just mentioned, especially on like a mid-high board, right? The rain, a rainbow board that's like jack-high or ten-high or nine-high, we can go big, because he needs some protection against overcards, we can get value, wanna get stacks in by the river. So we wanna go bigger. Yo, Kulsey Young! Welcome in. We're trying to study some cash gaming tonight. I'm enjoying it, it's kind of tough sometimes. But luckily, crack is, uh, helping us hu- big time here. So, uh, in this spot, we decided we're gonna bet big, right? That's at least what I decided, so let's do it. I hope it's the other one, I hope it's the bigger bet. No, small! No! We check and bet small here, chat. We have to go back to the drawing board. So low jack versus big blind here. On the jack-high flush draw board. Yeah, equities are close-ish, but um... You could say under the gun has a big range advantage here, even on the nut end, right? Under the gun has a big range advantage, at the very top, we don't, though. At the very top, we have no nut advantage. And that is why we have to bet small. And I think I started saying that, by the way, but then I forgot about it. I started saying the big blind probably doesn't three-bet jacks nines and sixes pre-flop, so he has all the sets in his range. Even jacks don't like to three-bet against low jack. So the big blind has all the sets in his range. Um... Yeah. Jacks, eights, sixes, so in that sense, we don't have an advantage over them. We do have overpairs, though. We do have queens plus, of course, but that's it. They have some, and they have some two pairs that we don't have. Jack x, jack, jack a, jack six. Interesting. Yeah, strong nut advantage, um... I think it's the same, if you look at the graph. Um... Like, I would call this the same. But then, at the, at the, 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 below that, we have a big advantage. So that leads towards betting often and betting for a small sizing. Um... But overall, we check fifty-six percent, so that doesn't really add up here. So I think the summary is, our range advantage is not big enough to bet often. I think that's the main point here. Alright. Let's play a couple more hands, let's not, uh, always stay there too long. The part of the range we dominate the most is middle part of range, and that doesn't want to put mu- much money in. Yeah, okay, that makes sense. Yeah, on the, on the jack-high board, the previous hand, okay? I, 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 I follow. Let's, uh, play the jack-nine offsuit, this is an open on the button, chat. I think so, right? Was it offsuit nine suited sixes? Um... Nah, it's a fold, right? I'm, I'm confusing myself. It's an open in empty Ts, for sure. Um... But, uh, in cash games, you open like forty-two percent instead of fifty-five. But instead of suited fives, it's suited sixes. So it might be offsuit nines. Yeah, so it's on the border. Phil says there was something mentioned on the podcast I watched today. Where their range has a lot of weaker hands. You go with smaller sizes to get the weaker hands to call. Yeah, that makes sense. Because anything that calls a bigger bet has you in trouble. Um... Yeah. Um... Lots of, lots, lots of things can be true at the same time, right? That's the beauty about poker too. Uh, that makes a lot of sense. Um... But yeah, that's, that, that is why we don't wanna bet big if the, if our opponent has the nuts, right? So, because if we get in trouble against those nutted hands, we don't wanna build big pots against them. And because our range advantage wasn't so big, that, that plays a role here, I guess. Yo, Wannas! How you doing? Welcome to the stream, my first stream of twenty-twenty-four. It's gonna be a variety of things, as always, with me. We're, we're closing in to the end of the DTO reset part. Because my brain can handle it for more than like two hours. We're gonna, gonna do a couple more hands, because I'm enjoying it, but before ten, we'll, uh, switch to, uh, playing some poker. And then, uh, if I still have energy around midnight, I think we'll have some energy. We might play some games as well, so it's gonna be everything tonight. Everything combined. Yeah, I'm gonna play some cash, Wannas. Probably on no delay, though. And I might change my mind, but... I will have, I, I will have, uh... I will have an update of the, uh... of how it's going, because poker, I can capture poker tracker. And I've never been able to do this because on, on GG, we can't track it live, how it's going with your session, because that doesn't work that way. But on iPoker, we can track it live. We can track the action. Um... Back to the jack-nine, uh, I, I can't remember. Okay, it's an open. It's on bottom of our range, though, it's bottom of our range. Yeah. That, about bet sizing again, yeah, so if, uh, if the trash folds anyway to any size, that's, small is better, because it does the same thing for a cheaper price. Um... And of course, that's true in any case, right? But it, it depends on how big part of the range of our opponent has that trash. And in tournaments, we saw earlier, in tournaments, the big blind often has a huge amount of trash. Uh, because they, because they defend a wide pre-flop. But you can go, often get away with a super small bet against the big blind, and in cash, it's lit- little less often the case. Um... Yeah, yeah, uh, uh, to be fair, girls, I'm often still wondering everything as well, so we're discussing things while studying here, so it's totally fine. What are you, what are you playing, Slavich? What, what stakes? Are you still stuck at four and L at Unibet? I'm putting the joke against you now. Are you still stuck at four and L after all those years? Haven't you studied? So we got an eight-high board here against the big blind. Um... We have a small range advantage, but we don't wanna, uh, range bet this board. Um... I think it's like a polarized betting here. Um, we do have the sets, the overpairs. They will three-bet eights. We probably call sixes and threes. They have eight-six suited. And lots of draws. You wanna charge the draws if you have an eight or an overpair. And probably in this case, our strong hand will drive the value, right? Because you have so many overpairs and eight x. We don't have that many eight x, though. We have some eight x. We, we open all the suited eights here. We have sets, we have overpairs, we have some top pairs. But probably that part of the range is drift, dri- drives the betting size? I think si- large, but I've been wrong before. I'll give you guys some time to think about it. I'm trying to learn to also pause sometimes, you know? Because I'm talking too much sometimes. You, you, and now I'm still doing it. You got, people will be more active in chat if you, once in a while, pause for five seconds. Something I'm trying to implement in my, uh, streaming game. I'm not only learning to play poker, I'm also playing a streaming game. But, uh, I'm, I'm leaning towards a big bet here, chat. And also with this hand. Um... Because we have jack-high, you know, wanna, we wanna bluff this, I think. It's like it is bottom of our range, right? Because if we go, if we go for a polarized strategy here, it's bottom of our range. We have a runner straight draw. But maybe it's not strong enough. Maybe we need a spade added to our runner, runner, uh, runner straight draw. We had this spot before with a pair where we needed the spade. Maybe with a spade, we have to bet this, we check this. I could, I could, I could, I could see that. Yo, Philmyace. He would not see bet this? He would just give up? It's a good, it's kind of a good, there's a lot of good turns for us, though, right? We can start bluffing on an ace and a king, maybe. Maybe go bet on a seven or a ten or a jack. Maybe even a nine. But there's lots of turns we can start betting on, I guess. If we, it's not, it's not a give-up completely if we check here. We have some playability. Yeah, with a spade, right? Yeah, I think I might, might, you might be onto something here. Purely the runner straight draw with the jack-nine is not great here. Yeah, and I thought this was polarized betting here as well, so I agree with the sizing. Let's check. Okay? Why is it always mixed? It's so hard to learn if it's always mixed. But it chooses the bet the most often. No, check, it chooses check most often. And the big blind decides to lead big, which I understand. Because they will have some straights here. They will have some seven-nine, they will have some four-seven, they will have some two pair. It makes a lot of sense that the big blind starts betting big here. Uh, I think my hand just folds, by the way. Not even a big decision. But just trying to understand what's happening here. Yeah, yeah, we, we, we're playing it slow today, Philmyace, we've been diving into some spots in depth to see what's happening. But yeah, this hand folds, of course, but good to stand still, uh... We have a gutshot and two overcards, but on this board, that's not enough, you know, we need, we need some, uh, better suits. Better connectivity than just the overcards and the gutshots. We do fold hundred percent. We did it, chat. Teamwork. Let's open the king-jack on the button. No, that's correct. Oh, we get three-bet, I was gonna play, I was looking forward to a flop. I think we fold. But it's good to discuss, uh, what hands we call the three-bet with. It's usually the pairs, the suited connectors, the suited aces. And hands like ace, queen, ace, jack, maybe. We have position. But this certainly folds. You often see that, the, the, the offsuit broad race and the weaks part of your suited hands as well, we'll just get rid of it. So we were not gonna fall, not gonna call, but uh, we have some four-bet bluffs as well, of course, with the ace-five suited, or sometimes an ace, ace-jack offsuit or ace-ten offsuit wants to four-bet bluff. Six-seven five, six-seven suited, maybe. Against the maniac, depends a bit on how maniacal he is, Philmyace. Like, in, like, in this case, we're playing against, against DTO, so we don't go too crazy, but uh, big blind versus button should three-bet quite wide, right? He has some bluffs for sure. So we, we should re-bluff once in a while against DTO. Against maniacs, you, you can, you can pay it on your value hands, right? So I wouldn't try to, uh, go crazy here against the maniac. I would just wait for my hands, uh, my better hands and get paid off later, right? I would just wait for my hands, uh, my better hands and get paid off later, right? Like, all you have to know specifically, three-bet folds a lot, right? Who'd be a, who'd be maniacal? You always try to three-bet. Uh, and then fold, but yeah. That's burning money. Yeah, maniacs won't fold enough, yeah. Against maniacs, you just play your value hands strongly, right? You'll get paid, so no need to bluff a lot. Yeah, we fold the a-king-jack. And we, uh, we take a quick look at what their range looks like. Um We jam some ace-queen here. That's interesting. It's the, the range on the right is the button, uh, strategy after the big blind three-bet. But we stick around with all these pairs and all these playable broadways. Uh, we have some four-betting with jacks plus. Offsuit aces prefer to just fold or three-bet, four-bet. Then we have the, the rare ace-queen and tens jam. Quite interesting. Quite interesting. But hey, just I had like tens, you know, we have enough equity against their calling range to be able to do that. And we have bad playability, right? Because there's so many bad flops for middling pairs. But that's why I had like tens likes to jam. It's a bit of a MTT play. If that makes, if that makes sense, like poker ten, you wanna also get it in, right? Because you have so much equity, but so, but the playability is bad. But, uh, yeah, interesting, interesting. Yeah, this is the last hand, chat. This is the last hand. I'm getting a little tired of the study. Been enough, I think. It'll be a late-position thing, yeah. Ace-queen and tens are the equivalent to ace-king and kings in earlier position. Yeah, I see that. I'm not sure if I do this in-game, though. Let's see how I, how my four and five betting game looks like when we're actually playing a bit, uh. Uh, we better play the last hand of the study session, chat. It's been more than two hours, so it's okay. We'll play the queen-seven suited uh, against the big blind on this dry jack-high board. Um But this is a rainbow board. We talked about this earlier. The betting might be going bigger here. Because it's easier to get value all streets with our overpairs and our top pairs. That's what Crack explained a bit earlier. This is a spot where my intuition, which is wrong, with my somehow wrongly learned intuition, would bet small. Um So let's discuss, is this a spot where we bet small or bet large? Against the big blind here. Um, there's not that many nutted hands here at all, right? Uh, for the big blind, like jack-six student might be in his range? Yeah, probably is in his range. That's about it. And we have all the sets and all the overpairs, so this is a good board for us. Um But yeah, if we go big, where, where do we get our value from? They have enough jack-axe, I guess. Um Certainly some six-axe as well. Yeah, so ace-jack and overpair wanna get stacks in. Um, there's value to be, to be received from, from jack-axe and six-axe and pocket pairs. But there's enough hands we can get called by. There's no draws to be worried about, though. So see where my, where my mind goes wrong here? Like, I'm thinking, oh, no draws, dry board. Uh I would be inclined to bet small. We gotta get it out of my system. So Philmy Ace wants to bet small. I'm trying to find the big bet, and Crack says finding big bets. I hope you're right, Crack, because then we learn something and we can apply it again, and we, and we will be right, right? But, um We'll know soon enough. Was waiting for if somebody else wants to give an opinion. Yeah, because there's less does, does the deuce and the trees make so much difference now? And now you also sneaked in a seven there. Because they both are one higher. I can see that they have more sevens as well we can get paid from. Does the three or the deuce really matter? Like It, it almost doesn't matter, but yeah, it does matter. If the suited connectors at the five-three and four-three. And none, no deuces in that sense. Um This is equal, though. Interesting. Okay, I understand the logical thing here. Yeah, the deuce is almost not playing. Except if there's a wheel draw or something. The, the deuce almost never matters, yeah. This is almost like a jack-six, there's no cardboard. Jack-six, nothing. Yeah, let's just finish it off here, chat. Uh, let's follow the big bet. Fifty percent of the time. We'll check it out what the best sizing was. Uh, we get called, and there's an eight of spades. We don't actually improve our equity here. Not even a gut shot. Um, and the big blind can improve on this eight. There's some spade draws that are coming in that never fold. His jack will never fold. I think we just check. Because that made sense. And if he checks again, do we bluff the river? He did check again. He did check again. Do we bluff this queen-high, chat? Our final decision of the evening. Well, there will be more decisions, but this might end our, uh, cash game study for today. Are we bluffing the queen-high, chat? And why? Well, the big blind has checked three times. That's a very good reason, right? And our showdown value is super bad. Um, because he's probably having a weak pair or deuce or six or something. Uh, or ace-high even. So he probably has a better hand than us. But we have no showdown value. Um So yeah, I guess I like a bluff. I guess I like a bluff. And we gotta determine our, we're also bottom of our range, by the way. Always a good excuse, right? We're bottom of our range, so we gotta have, we, we gotta bluff. The, the yellow, yellow dot is, uh, where we are in our range. Interesting graph, right? We, we, we saw lots of equity graphs today, but this is the most crazy one, but because we looked mostly at flop, uh, graphs, not river graphs. But this is where all the pairs come in, right? Uh So here we have all the overpairs, I think, and two pairs and stuff. And this is all the trash with zero percent. So yeah, we have a lot of bluffs here, because this, this graph is like with, with, with that. We, we have like forty percent of our range is completely utterless useless. So probably need some blockers or something, right, to decide which of those hands we bluff? Otherwise, we're overbluffing here. Yeah, it's super polarized, yeah. We have utter trash. Forty percent of our range has no showdown value. Then a little bit of in-between. And then we have a lot of super great hands. Well, at least value hands that can certainly go for value. Um But if we go bet all our jack-axe and maybe eight-axe and better, it means you can bluff quite a lot too here, right? To balance that. Solo says we need to never bluff. Bluffing is bad for poker. Well, I would love to play against you, Solo, but maybe you were bluffing about that. Maybe this was a reverse reverse, uh. And the question, do we do we need to go big to make the big blind fold all his weakest hands, you know? What's the big blind doing with an eight? He doesn't have too many eights, maybe. A seven, eight. The six is more likely, of course. What if he has king-six? He's supposed to look us up, probably. Yeah, so you're playing, uh, you, 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 then you go smallish, right? Wouldn't you go smallish with an eight? But maybe you go bigger with your back, bigger value, right? If you have sets or top pair or overpair, you might go overbet here. And then our second bet size is a smaller sizing, and it's for eight-axe, nine, tens. Hands like that. Then our bluff comes in that value, right? In that, this bluff comes in that betting size. Oh yeah, that's true. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We never should go small here. Well, the smallest size is fifty percent often, right, in, uh, in position on the river? But we, we can still have two sizes. But then often the smallest is like fifty percent, and the bigger is like pot or bigger. Um So yeah, it's, it's probably either fifty or seventy-seven. Let's go seventy-seven. Oh yeah, we're already in a wrong, uh, tree, right? Or, no, we're already in a wrong tree. It's check, we give up with this one. And let's investigate, what do we bluff with on the river? But first, let's go back to the start. Um Because the decision to c-bet was interesting as well. The big blind calls, jack-six deuce, big blind checks. And then we decided to go big. But it's super mixed here. It's super mixed. It's hard to say something about this. It's hard, it's hard to find the heuristic that leads towards this complete utter mixing here, right? Thirty percent checking, seventy percent mixed betting. Hard to analyze that, right? Um, but equities do run close at this point still in the hand. Much closer than, uh, the river spot we just saw, right? But, um yeah. My, my, my brain is fried after two and a half hours of this nonsense. But that's the final thing we're looking at. Is, uh, the river bluff that we shouldn't do with this hand. Um And now we can find what, what the good bluffs are for the cut-off here in position. Um Yeah, so in the study mode, we can filter easier. I don't wanna go to study mode for this last moment. But we can see that all our, uh, overpairs and all our queen-axe go for value. And the bluffs, jack-axe go for value. And this king-nine is a bluff, for example. But we bluff with spades and hearts. We give up with diamonds and clubs. You see this pattern on, uh, on all these other hands as well. But the city, the queen-seven never bluffs. Funny, right? Why does queen-nine bluff and queen-seven doesn't, you know? There must be reasons for it. Yeah, we can solve it easier at Crack. But that would be, you know, that would be a whole different kind of stream where we go solve things. Um, yeah, with AI, you can, uh, you can, uh, make the bet sizes, uh, more clear. To be fair, when we, when we started the trading, I had simplistic selected, right? Then we changed it to regular later to have these options to bigger bets and stuff. You block nine-ten on the turn? Yeah, you wanna, you wanna, you wanna unblock that. You wanna have, you want the big blind to have those draws. That makes sense. Probably a reason, yeah. Probably a reason. Um You can see that there's, uh, a blocker score of one. Uh, the value removal score of one. And with the seven. Oh no, I'm just, I'm just talking crap. Never mind. I couldn't prove that quickly. I thought I could prove that quickly. I think we studied enough. I think I learned. Um, I wanna thank you all for, uh, learning with me. Especially Crack for, uh, saying so many useful and learn, learnable things here. We will do this again. Um Probably not on Friday, because Friday I might have a party in the bar where I need to go to. Want to go to. But it might not be a Friday stream this week. Uh, that's also why I wanted for sure to stream today, because otherwise it would be too long without streams. Um Yeah, next week, we'll, we'll do this again. Um, thanks, Philmy Ace. I'm gonna put this on YouTube as well. And all my previous GTO wizard, uh, streams, there's like eleven of them or something, eleven or twelve of them.